Buckingham County Planning Commission Meeting for October 23rd. Please stand for invocation led by, given by Commissioner Dorr and our pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Cruz.
Let us pray. Lord, we just thank you for another beautiful fall day. We thank you for our blessings, Lord. We thank you for each and one who participates here tonight. Be with us, guide us, and direct us, and give us safe passage as we leave here tonight. We ask in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Brings us establish a quorum. We have a quorum, and we have seven of eight. Nikki, is there any changes to the agenda?
I am only aware of one change by Commissioner Gooden. She had asked to change the order of the two items under a public hearing.
Okay.
That would be to move the public hearing for case 23 SUP 332 in front of case 23 SUP 331.
Okay, all right. I have no issues with that. We'll change that. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the change?
Yes, sir.
All of, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes. All right, that brings us approval of minutes. We have the September 18th, 2023 work session. Do we have a motion to approve as presented, or is there any changes?
Move to accept as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, passes. That brings us to our regular meeting, September 25th of 2023.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
On page 360 of those minutes, this is the best I can do, there's a comment, there's a long comment by me, but all of that is not my comment.
Okay.
Page 360, down near the bottom, and it's down to the bottom, there's a long comment, and where it starts at, we, I think that's McNally. Can you find it, Nikki?
I'm looking, yes, ma'am. Give me just one more. Where it starts, we understand there's a little bit of fatigue.
Yes.
And that should be the part that is not your comment.
That is not my comment.
Commissioner Gooden, I will verify this and have the minutes reviewed and...
All right, thank you.
Okay. After all the changes, do I have a motion to approve with the change?
Second.
All right, have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, that passes unanimously. All right, Nikki, that brings us to public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have two citizens signed up for public comment tonight. The first one is Marjorie Chambers. She will be followed by James Smith.
Okay. Please come forward and state your full name, address. You have three minutes and...
Board members, my name is Marjorie Chambers. I reside at 262 Liberty Road, New Canton, Virginia, which is in Marshall District. I'm happy to be here tonight to express strong support for Hotson Energy, support for the proposed solar energy project that is currently or will be under your consideration. This project has the potential to bring about numerous benefits to the community, including job growth and increased revenue for our county. First and foremost, the implementation of a solar energy project in our county would significantly boost job opportunities. In an era where employment is vital concern, this project promises to create substantial number of jobs, both directly for the installation and maintenance of the solar panels and directly through related industries. The residents of our county, particularly those struggling to find employment, would benefit greatly from those opportunities. Moreover, the solar energy project aligns perfectly with our county commitment to sustainability and environmental responsibility. By reducing our dependence on fossil fuels and harnessing the power of the sun, we not only contribute to a cleaner environment, but a position our county as a leader in renewable energy. Additionally, it is worth noting that this project can produce our county's revenue. Solar energy projects often generate income through power generation and sale of excess energy in the grid. This revenue can be invested into our community, funding essential services, infrastructure improvements, and education initiatives, which will benefit everyone. I would like to say that two of our team members on this project, Kyle West and Frank Hopson, is here tonight. They're not only here as trying to get this program, project offhand, they are out and about in the community. They are out talking to people, being accessible, and helping where areas are needed. So I totally and ask you to please approve this solar energy project. It is a forward-thinking initiative that not only meets our environmental goals, but also addresses crucial issues such as job growth and revenue enhancement. By supporting this project, you will have the opportunity to leave a lasting and positive impact on our county and its residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Nikki?
James Smith?
Jamie Smith, Stonefield Farms, Mayesville District, 4. Tonight, I would like to talk to you all about a friend I talked to this week, and he was having trouble selling some of his beef. He has custom processed, he sells it ahead of time, and then it goes to the customer. And he has it done at a custom, inspected custom processor, but sometimes it's difficult to move that kind of, you know, if he has a lot ahead. And so, he's having difficulty selling it. There's a bill that's up in Congress that would allow folks to sell meat that's done at a custom processor, say in Virginia, within the state limits, interstate sales of that meat. Currently, that's prohibited by federal law. And that's just one more thing we can do to help local, small farmers, comes to actually farming and making food available locally. And I would like to encourage anyone to call their congressperson or their senator and encourage them to pass this legislation. It's just one more thing we can do. And when folks come before y'all, looking to put small processing facilities on the farm so that they can have a, you know, process their own food and sell it to their neighbor, I encourage y'all to be open to approving that kind of facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is that all for the public comment period?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, now I'll close the public comment period, and I'll bring us to the whole business. Nikki, that will go with the CWJ Properties LLC application.
Yes, sir. Their first case for public hearing this evening is case 23 SUP 332. Our landowner is Jesse M. Woodson Johnson at 3781 Petersville Church Road, New Canton. The applicant is CWJ Properties LLC. The property information, it's Tax Map 86, parcel nine, it's approximately one acre in this parcel, and it is located at 3973 Petersville Church Road, all in the Marshall Magisterial District. This property is Zoned A1, and the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit to operate an adult home and assisted living facility. As this case was introduced to the Planning Commission last month, there are 10 conditions for review that you may consider attaching to this request, and we do have our applicant, CWJ Properties, along with our landowner, Jesse M. Woodson Johnson, present to discuss this case and answer questions or concerns.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. This is scheduled public hearing. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for the applicant before the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I will now open the public hearing for this application. Nikki, do we have anyone signed up?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have anyone signed up. I did receive an email today from an adjacent property owner that is unable to be in town. Would it be the wishes of the Planning Commission to share this?
Being that he couldn't, it's a gentleman out, because I received it myself. I guess, if you don't mind, go ahead and read it for the record.
Yes, sir. The email states, Dear Ms. Edmiston, I am writing in response to the notice that I received about the public hearing for case 23 SUP 332. I would have preferred to attend this meeting, however, I will be out of town on this date. Please share and forward this letter to the members of the Planning Commission. I am the landowner directly across from this proposed development. I was very surprised that anyone would consider building an adult assisted living facility in such a remote and rural area. This area has a history of agriculture and forestry. It is sparsely populated with single-family homes. Deer, bear, turkeys, bobcats, and other animals populate the area, which provides excellent opportunities for the sportsmen. As far as infrastructure, the road system in the area is a mix between paved and gravel. Any such facility would be completely out of place in this environment. I believe that this project will have a negative impact on my property value. I am currently using my land for forestry, but it is subdivided for future home sites. I am also concerned with the stated plans. As I understand, the proposal is now for a one-to-three-person facility with a plan to get the state's approval to expand. This is vague and doesn't address the true scope of the project. I appreciate the information that you provided about the proposal, as well as the applicant's phone number. Unfortunately, the applicant does not answer her phone, and the voicemail was full. I do wish to know the full scope of the proposal and what is the long-range plan. I am also interested in what experience she has in running such a facility and why this location was chosen. I feel that such a facility belongs in a more accessible location, one closer to emergency services might make sense. Also, a location closer to a town would have less negative impact on the surrounding area. On a personal note, my father is in an assisted living facility. One problem that plagues this age group is isolation and loneliness. Again, it makes sense that the current location is not appropriate for this type of business. I have not met or spoken with the applicant, and I find this to be troubling. Why was there no attempt to reach out to the adjacent landowners that would be impacted by the project? I am adamantly opposed to this proposal and urge the Buckingham County Planning Commission to reject this proposal. Sincerely, Alan Davia.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. With that, I'll close the public hearing for this case and turn it to the Commission. At this point, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Chairman, just a statement. To their credit, you know, I've been to the facility. You know, I don't know that I quite agree, the fact that it's not appropriate. It was a really restful-looking facility. I didn't see any encroachment. I didn't notice the person across. Have you ever talked to, may I ask?
Yes.
Have you talked to the people across the street, Ms. Woodson, at all?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
Do you, yes, Miss Shaw, would you come forward and state your name, address, please, ma'am?
Good evening, everyone. To answer your question, I have never met him. He did telephone me on the 20th, which I was at a conference in Richmond, and so I did try to call him today, and I did leave a message. But I have never met him. I don't even know what he looks like, and I did not even know the name of the landowner until I searched the records at the clerk's office.
Okay, but when I met with you at your house, we went over how close your emergency facility would be. Would you mind telling the Commission what you told me, because it didn't seem like it was that burdensome? Can you kind of restate, if somebody needed emergency help, you know, what is the availability?
Well, the person will be transported either by, we will call the emergency department, and depending on how close they are to us, if it's necessary, we would take them to the hospital, and if the Central Virginia Community Health Center is open during that time, we would transport them to there. And not only would we do that, but we will call the family members as well.
Okay, and how far would it be for, let's say, an ambulance or a fire rescue? How long would it take for them to get to your facility?
Okay, from Avonia, probably be about 15 to 20 minutes.
Are they the closest?
Well, I think they're like in the same distance between Cumberland, I mean, between where the home is located to Dillon, and it's all, so there's probably approximately the same distance to Avonia.
Right, I remember you saying that to me. It was always 15 minutes. I don't know, I don't know what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. What I will tell you, Mr. Chairman, when I visited the property, I was duly impressed, okay? I mean, these people are really sincere about taking care of individuals, and I understand they're not totally incapable, these people that you intend to have. I mean, they are going to be somewhat self-sustaining. Can you explain some of that, too?
Yes. We are taking people that are able to get themselves... Um, we are taking people that are able to get their own selves a bath, um, that can, you know, able to put their own clothes on and to feed themselves. We will be providing, you know, the home, the shelter, doing their laundry, preparing their meals, making sure that they take their medication, keeping up with their doctor's appointments so that they, you know, will be able to, um, we'll help them remember their doctor's appointments and contact, you know, their loved ones so that they'll be able to go to their doctor's appointments.
Yeah, with three people there, uh, I looked, when I looked at your property, I looked at the parking, and the parking was no problem. It seemed to me you had plenty of, plenty of room. Can you explain that to the commission? It didn't seem like there would be any encroachment at all, either on the road or against your neighbor's property?
Well, there's, um, we have, what, here you have the home facing the, um, the road, and you can get into our property two ways, on the right side and in the left side, and you can also park in front of the house. So there is no encroachment on any person that, you know, is across the road from this property.
Okay, and one last question. Um, I know you told me at one time that you were going to start out with three people. What, do you have any specific plans for any significant expansion? I knew you, you were talking about mobbing public, you know, doing something in order to bring in a fourth individual, but are you talking about another whole building, or what, what have you got in mind?
Well, um, once we obtain license through the state, we will be able to put two more people in the home, so there'll be five. Um, our, our deal is to have, um, maybe two people in a room, but to start off, it's only going to be one person in the room, except for the larger room, which we believe, we, in fact, we know we can get two people in that room.
So you're, you're really not in, you're really not, you're not, at this point in time, planning to put an additional building up, are you?
No, sir.
Okay.
But we'll, you know, we want to keep that open, because we have enough land there that, where we can expand.
Um, question for Ms. Edmiston, if that were the case, would there have to be another hearing, if she were to add a building and add more people?
Depends, she's left, um, the narrative open-ended, including but not limited to she stating additional plans, that if the licensure comes in and approves, um, or patients under her license, that she would expand to accommodate those. At this point, I would state that her narrative, and in my opinion as zoning administrator, that her, um, request this evening encompasses not only the one to three, but future potential and expansion.
Uh, would there be a, a condition that could be added, such that if there was a request for additional buildings, that Ms. Woodson would kindly come to the commission and discuss it with us?
Well, you, remember, this is a one acre, so this is a grandfathered non-conforming lot. What that means for Ms. Woodson Johnson is exactly what she has done to have the home, the, the dwelling that is currently listed there. She was able to meet setbacks and fulfill her building permit, so at this point, no other building or dwelling can be placed there, um, if it's going to be for, you know, residential living purposes. But of course, if she could meet the setback, she could have something as anyone else does, and that would be an addition to this property. So that is something that would be allowable without coming back, unless, as the Planning Commission, you have the ability to set conditions to maintain the integrity of the district, so that would be up to the commission.
Would you be objectionable to coming back to us if, in fact, you did want to put another building or an addition onto this?
If we wanted to put another one?
Right.
Um, I would prefer if I did not have to, um, because in addition to that one acre of land, um, we have eleven acres plus thirty acres behind where we live.
Right, but if she were to put it on that property, this, this one acre is sectioned off, am I right?
We're not planning on putting any additional buildings on, well, you know, homes for adults on the way, one acre.
Okay, and if she had, if she had to put another piece, another building on another piece of property, she would necessarily come back?
She would have to come back, because this, this permit is only for Tax Map eighty-six dash nine, is one acre.
That's fine, that, that, you've answered my, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I heard the letter, and I think the person is confusing a nursing home and an adult or even a memory care facility. And so, I think he's comparing apples and donuts and something else to what's going on. So, um, and then as far as how far she is from a healthcare facility, we live in Buckingham County, and I just got a notice that's saying we'll be getting a doctor's office in Dillon, and it'll be opening the eleventh of November. So, we are all by a distance away from, um, emergency care. So there, there are, there are limits when you live in a rural area to getting emergency medical care. So I don't even see that as a, a concern for your facility. I understand it is an adult care facility, not a memory care facility, and not a nursing home. So, uh, and, uh, where is the person, where is the person's writing from? I'm just curious.
If my memory serves me correct, he is listed as the adjacent property owner, but I believe, believe his property is actually Cumberland County, and he would be across, directly across the road from Ms. Woodson Johnson.
Where do they actually, they're people who own property in Buckingham, but live in cities.
He, Mr. Davia, as he indicated to me last week, he does not live on this property. He, his actual residence is somewhere else.
Is somewhere else, and that's what I'm saying. We've had people who've been in cities and have had property here and, and do not understand what, what's available in rural life. So I see no problem with your.
Commissioner Gooden, the address is thirteen eleven River Road West, Crozier, Virginia, two three zero three zero. That would be, um...
Gooseland.
Gooseland.
Is it Crozier, Crozier?
Which is east Gooseland.
Gooseland, okay.
I'll also just sort of piggyback on that, uh, being from not very far away from the application. Uh, ten minutes, ten to fifteen minutes would be both the rescue squad and also the, uh, facility there at, uh, at Gold Hill, to the health service there. So, uh, that's probably about as good as you're going to get in the county at this point, so.
Getting ready to move the, um, rescue squad down to Avonia, so that'll be, that'll be closer for you. It'll be daytime, the nighttime weekends, not going to be set up like it right now.
But that's why all of us live in Buckingham County.
Sure. I'm just saying, as far as the distance for them will be closer for a rescue squad in that area.
The health center is probably about the same distance away as the Avonia rescue squad. It's, uh, both of them are very comparable. All right, any other questions from the?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion that they move onto the board.
All right, we have a motion to approve and move forward to the Board of Supervisors. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes you now, sir.
Thank you, officer.
Thanks, thank you, ma'am. All right, Nikki, that brings us to, back to the Buckingham Solar One LLC. Before I open up the public comment period, I just want to address that I have, of course, as unusual circumstances, I have had to abstain from participating before, but not in two applications in the same night. But anyway, with this application, I have asked and got information from Mr. Wright that because I have no financial interest in this property, or either family members that have or involved in it, I can actually participate in, in this application. So I just want to clear that up. With that, I'll go ahead and ask you to introduce it.
Sir, the next case for public hearing is twenty-three S U P three thirty-one. The landowners Ivan, or landowners are Ivan P. Davis Jr. and Deborah B. Davis at one oh six Wetstone Lane, and the applicant this evening is Buckingham Solar One LLC, Division of New Energy Equity LLC, and they're out of Roseville, Minnesota. The tax map is one fifty-one, parcel seventeen. There's approximately one hundred and sixty-six point six-two acres here, and it's located at or near Wetstone Lane, and it's in the Kurtsville District. This is an A1 zoning district, and the request is to obtain a special use permit to allow for the construction and thirty-five-year operation of a five-megawatt AC photovoltaic community solar garden. This case was introduced to you a few months ago. Uh, community meetings were held, and I did want to point out that Buckingham Solar One LLC, the applicant requested an S U P to allow for this construction and operation, um, and that the project itself is located on approximately twenty-four point zero eight acres of this one hundred and sixty-six point six-two parcel, acre parcel. There are, um, twenty-eight, twenty, thirty conditions actually attached to this, um, case. We do have Buckingham Solar One LLC, Jesse Diamond, available with us this evening as the applicant, or the representative for the applicant itself. He's here to address questions and concerns.
Okay. Very good, Nikki. Before I do the public hearing, uh, any commissioners would like to ask the applicant any questions?
I see a change on this, uh, that I hadn't looked at before. It's, number ten is set up five hundred feet instead of the three hundred and fifty feet that we used to have.
No, I am so sorry, I was actually taking a look at the draft solar policy and this, so let's make, um, the correction to that tonight, Mr. Allen, Supervisor Allen, that this should say three hundred and fifty.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask, I, I really want to ask why.
The other cases that have been approved are, have been three hundred and fifty feet, and the working conditions have been stated by the board.
Five hundred foot for, Riverstone is five hundred feet. Riverstone is five hundred feet.
About five hundred feet.
I just looked at it today.
I'm happy to go back and take a look at it for you.
Please do, because I don't understand if, and this, this is the problem that I have. I don't mean to be interrupting, but I, this is the problem I have. We've, we've got a draft policy that says five hundred. I brought this up last time. We've got Rosney Creek, which says five hundred. We've got one that says three hundred, one that says three fifty, and this one went back to five hundred. So again, Mr. Chairman, we don't have consistency. And if you tell me that we're going to use Rosney Creek as a model, fine, if you want to use Rosney Creek as a model, but that's the same...
Not Rosney Creek, Riverstone.
Riverstone, sorry, not Rosney Creek, Riverstone. If we're going to use that as a model, then we need to go back and take a look at it, because I've got it here if you want to see it.
No, I don't, I don't really want to see it. I know what's been approved, and your real questions should be addressed to the Board of Supervisors. Ms. Kapczynski.
That, yeah, Nikki's, I know what you're saying, Pete, but again, I think your own supervisor told you that they were going to go with the Riverstone condition, so that would include the buffers as well. Any other questions?
Then we need to look at the Riverstone condition.
Well, my understanding was what's been brought forward, I'm assuming it's three hundred and fifty feet. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, everything else is three hundred and fifty. The five hundred feet is in the policy.
Yeah, they, they went to five hundred on, which, they can volunteer to go higher. We're just asking for a minimum of three hundred and fifty feet, so.
The policy says five hundred feet, but we haven't adopted that.
The policy has not been adopted, it's still a draft. Okay, any further questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, I'll now open the public hearing for this application. Nikki, do we have anyone signed up?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have anyone signed up for the public hearing.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing for this case, and we'll turn it back over to the commission. At this time, does anyone now have any questions for the applicant? If not, do, uh, what is the pleasure of the commission?
I move, Mr. Chairman, that we send it on to the Board, Board of Supervisors.
Okay, we have a motion to move to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes you now, sir. Mr. Davis, you will be going to the Board of Supervisors, sir.
November fourteenth, six P. M.
Okay, new business. Uh, before you introduce the Verizon Wireless, uh, this is one of the, I have two that I have to abstain from, because I, uh, the Martin family, I actually do the timber management for them, so I will have to abstain from, uh, participating in this application. Therefore, I have now turned the meeting over to Ashley.
Ms. Edmiston, for your introduction.
Yes, sir, Chairman, Vice Chair Shoemaker. The next case before you tonight is an introduction of Case twenty-three S U P three thirty-three. Landowner is Martin Slate River Farm LLC, and the applicant is Verizon Wireless. I have Stuart Squire listed here, he's unable to attend, but Nate Holland is available via Zoom on his behalf this evening. Our tax map is sixty-five sixteen, it does contain approximately sixty-four point eight acres, and it is located on Ranson Road with an address to be debuted, um, right on US sixty, left on, um, not sixty, six thirty, I'm not sure, four miles, left on Virginia twenty north for four and a half miles, and on six fifty-nine for approximately two miles. There's an access drive on the left. These are the directions given by the applicant. It is in the Slate River Magisterial District. This area is zoned, and this parcel is zoned A1. The request before you this evening is to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of constructing a one hundred and ninety-nine-foot monopole communications tower. The applicant is asking the Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing for this request. As, um, always with our reviews for new cell towers and any revisions to existing cell towers, Cityscape is the wireless telecommunications expert and consultant for the county of Buckingham, and they have concluded that there is a preponderance of evidence that construction of a new personal wireless communications facility in the area is technically justified and is essential for the applicant to achieve its objective of seamless service in the county. Cityscape also believes the location and height proposed are technically appropriate. Therefore, Cityscape recommends approval of a new wireless facility with Verizon as an anchor tenant at the proposed location and tower height of one hundred and ninety-nine feet. The choice of the monopole color is at the discretion of the county. Below are the conditions attached to this that include those conditions specified by Cityscape. Would it be the pleasure of the Planning Commission to schedule a public hearing? If so, November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at six P. M.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I just need to know how far, I, I drove the road, I just want to know how far off the road, uh, that I was on, how far off, how far back from that road is that, is that cell tower going to be?
Let's look through the application as submitted, and Mr. Holland is available to, um, address those questions to Commissioner Kapczynski. Nathan, are you available?
Yeah, good evening. Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Um, I am looking that up right now. Um, I don't have the, uh, the actual setback on the plans, but I'm looking at Google Earth right now, if you just give me, uh, one quick second, and I will have that. It's, it's probably, I would say, at least a thousand feet, but I don't want to...
That's fine, thank you.
...tell you without, without actually giving you the actual distance.
That's all, that's all I have, thank you.
Oh, my Google Earth's not working a moment.
That's okay. Susan Raybold, Cityscape, the county.
I can, I can give that for you and have that at the, 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 the next Planning Commission meeting, if, if that works.
Perhaps you and...
I'll have the, the engineering firm provide that.
All right, good evening, I'm sorry. Susan Raybold with Cityscape Consultants, and we noted in our app, in our report that the one hundred and ninety-nine-foot, uh, structure requires a one hundred and ten percent setback, and they're clo, they're showing on their construction drawings that the closest, uh, point to the property line is two hundred and twenty feet.
How about to the road?
Um, to the road, I would need to go and look that up. I have it in my laptop, if you want me to look it up, I'm happy to do it.
Well, he said it would be about a thousand feet, is that more or less?
I don't think so, from the road.
You don't think it is?
Um, hold on.
Let me go look. I've, I've got the...
Per Google Maps, it shows about a thousand feet off of Route six fifty-nine.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I just, that's fine.
Any other questions?
I bring to the idea of how many, um, different cells you put in the tower. Usually, if we have six, I hadn't seen it wrote down, nor, I missed it.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question. I apologize. I apologize.
Well, you'll put in your cell, whatever you call it, I mess up sometimes, but it's supposed to be a ability for six to be up there or five?
There's six.
Typically, they're designed for us and for three additional carriers, so a total of four.
No, but that ain't, that ain't within our policy. Our policy is six, I think.
Okay. If the policy requires for six total, we can build the tower to provide for six total carriers. Now, that is based on a generic design for each carrier, so if another carrier puts more loading on it than what it was typically designed for one carrier, it may not hold a total of six, but that's what we design it for, usually 12 antennas for each carrier is, is how it, the, the design gets made. So we can, we can build it for a total of six.
All right. And then the other question I got is, you show a picture with a circle showing five-mile area, but you don't show anything of what the coverage is right now and what the coverage would be after you started. And that's something that we normally like to look at, give you a good idea whether the tower is, is beneficial or not.
Um, per, per the, the current law, state law, Verizon, the propagation maps, as we call them, coverage maps are considered proprietary information, and so the state has deemed that it is not, Verizon does not need to provide those maps to the jurisdictions. They can't base, make decisions based on, on coverage and business decision of the carriers. And I believe City, Gabe should have noted that in their review.
I hadn't heard that before, that, I've seen them in the other ones we've got, pictures and that says, yes, we got a good coverage, it's good to put up, or no, it ain't worth a hoot. So, right now, you're not going to tell us either way?
I, I can, I can address that with Verizon.
I'm Supervisor Allen. I'm not sure if you have access to the, the Cityscape.
I don't.
Letter. It's under, in your packet under buckingham dot Verizon dot new dot Ranson Road, 101223. On page two, one of the topics there discusses evidence of need for the proposed facility and it states the applicant has chosen not to provide documentation required by the county ordinance that would demonstrate the justification for the proper, proposed tower. I do have Susan Raybold with Cityscape, the county's consultant, to address some of these questions for, for you regarding those propagation maps.
Again, and it is 1,010 feet from Ranson Road.
Thank you.
And unfortunately, the Virginia state law removed from local government's ability to require what they consider proprietary information, which in the industry's opinion is propagation maps. And so you cannot require them any longer, you can request them. Some applicants do provide the propagation maps freely. Verizon opted in this application not to provide the propagation maps. So if you were, you, you cannot require them to, to provide them to you at this time. But with that being said, had we been concerned about the distance from the tower to its handoff, because it did identify where the closest handoff is, and the tower where it's being proposed is, let's see, we have it in here, I have to find it, but it is considerably, it, it falls within the expected space for the tower to fill in a gap. So we looked at where the existing towers are and where they're proposing this one, and it, based on our experience and your topography and your terrain and your ambient tree height that we've seen when we've done other reviews, it seemed a reasonable location for what they were proposing at that height.
Y'all get to see the picture of it and, I know it says we can't.
No, we can't. They did not.
Y'all can't see it either, okay.
No, no, because whatever they provide to us is, becomes public record.
I have a question, don't say, I have a question about your, your figure three and that's within five miles. That's not saying, that is the, where the, it's just showing towers within the five-mile range.
Yes.
Doesn't address service within the five-mile range.
That is correct, because we were looking to see if they could co-locate on any of those existing structures. And there was, there was a little discrepancy that we called out when the application was originally submitted. The applicant, the engineer for T-Mobile, or excuse me, for Verizon, made a comment that Verizon had conducted an FCC antenna structure registration search of the intended coverage area and found there are no registered support structures of any height within three miles. Now, only towers that are required to be lit or within the fly zone are required to get registered on that website through the FCC. And having enough experience in the area, we knew and I could identify to them that there was a T-Mobile tower, or tower with T-Mobile on it, at 2.2 miles. So they had said that there wasn't a tower in the registration within three miles, which is correct, but there was a tower within that three-mile area. We understood that to be their search area. We later found out from Verizon, they corrected themselves and said that their search area is actually half a mile, and they provided a statement to that effect, and there are no towers within that half a mile area for them to co-locate on. They were then required to provide a new special use permit application addressing that concern, and they revised their material to be, and their narrative to be a half a mile and not a reference to a three-mile area. So based on that, that they, there's nothing within the half-mile area, according to your state law, we can't require much more information than that. They provided a narration that their search area was a half mile and that's what we have to go with. And I should note that, that tower that's within the 2.2-mile area of where this is, with the topography, our engineer figured out that that tower would have to be increased in height considerably in order for them to co-locate on that facility. And one, they don't own that tower, so they're not at liberty to mitigate it. You'd have to go to that property owner. Two, if you increase the height of that tower within the 2.2 miles, it would go over the 199-foot threshold, so then it would have to be lit. And, but we did explore that with them extensively. We had a number of conference calls with them to try and figure out if there was, in fact, any possibility that they could go on that tower, and we felt that they demonstrated that they could not. But we did hold on to that completeness review. We maintained that the application was incomplete for a couple of months until we felt like that item had been significantly resolved with the applicant.
I'll say, I do know that is a spotty area. I've got Verizon service and it's not much service right through there, but I mean, I think it would be nice to at least see a map. I mean, I guess we, we can still request it, correct? Whether they want to give it to us or not?
Can request it, but they do not have to, you can't mandate that they provide it. You can ask for it, but they do not have to provide it.
And I agree with Commissioner Cruz. We both run in that same neighborhood and I can tell you exactly where my phone is going to drop and where there's service. So just to agree with you, it's needed, whether we get a map or not, we need all the help we can in that area. And ma'am, just for you, how is it that you decided to come tonight? What brought you here? We've needed you here before. And, and I'm so excited to see you because we've had many questions.
Well, I'm, I'm glad I'm here then.
What, what was the magic word that got you here?
Nikki, she requested that we make, that we be here this evening. And typically, in the past, we've come to the public hearing portion if, if we were needed, and she explained to me that this was really a better opportunity to field questions, and so that's why I'm here.
Well, thank you very much and thank you, Nikki.
And we'll make a point to be here in the future.
Please know if she's, if Cityscape's unable to attend in person, they will attend via Zoom and virtually, so we've always had a great working relationship.
Are there any other questions or discussions?
I make a motion that we move it on a public hearing and request a map. In the meantime, whether we get it or not, I guess we can just see a public hearing.
Make a motion.
I second it.
Favor? Motion passes for a public hearing, November 14th?
November 27th, 2023, 6:00 P.M.
6:00 P.M., thank you.
You know, another thing you might could ask is if they could bring it and just come up here and show it to us and then put it back in their pocket. That way they won't have it in public, you know? That's just my thought.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think I need, I, I really, Ms. Edmondson, I think I owe her an apology because I think I was talking about Rosney Creek, wasn't I?
It's okay. I did pull up a copy of Riverstone.
It is 350?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
It's okay.
Yeah.
Ashley, before you introduce the next case, as I indicated, I have had to abstain before, but not two applications in the same meeting, but anyway, Hodson Energy Mountain Pine, as I introduced or said last month when I knew that they, they were ready to bring us forward, I would have to abstain and I will because I got financial interest in it. What I did want to say, two things, is that I talked, in my conversation with Mr. Wright, what I will do from this point, once tonight, after it's introduced, if in the time period that this, my application is going forward, until a decision is made, if for some reason another solar farm, either community or industrial, would become before the planning commission, I will have a meeting with Mr. Wright and Mr. Davis, my supervisor, to get a course of action is what they want me to do as far as my level of participation or whether I even have any participation. My second thing I want to, now, Mr. Wright, in our discussions, did say although I cannot discuss or vote in this situation on, on this application, excuse me, if the commissioners have any questions they want to ask me, I can actually respond to that, so. Anyway, with that, Ashley, I'll turn it back over to your capable hands.
All right, thank you for your explanation, Mr. Bigford, and Ms. Edmondson for your introduction.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the planning commission, the next case before you for introduction is Case 23 SUP 334. Landowners are Bigford Family Lands LLC and Dick Purcell Land, Cattle and Timber. The applicant this evening is Mountain Pine Arbonia LLC and Mountain Pine Arbonia II LLC, which is a subsidiary of Hodson Energy. The property information this evening included in this request are Tax Map 43, Parcel 41, Tax Map 54, Parcel 190, Tax Map 54, Parcel 157, Tax Map 43, Parcel 50, Tax Map 43, Parcel 50 Lot A, and Tax Map 43, Parcel 51. The approximate acreage of all properties in this request is 1,065 acres. The parcels are located both north and south of Blinky's Road, State Route 672, where Bear Garden Creek crosses under the road, and this is in the Marshall Magisterial District. This zoning district is agricultural A1, and the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit to allow for the construction and operation of the project on the property. The applicant proposes to install solar photovoltaic PV modules to produce up to 80 megawatts. The power generated will be linked to the electrical transmission grid via the existing overhead 230 KV high voltage onsite transmission line. The applicant is asking the planning commission to hold a public hearing for this request. Mountain Pine Arbonia LLC and Mountain Pine II LLC requests a special use permit to allow for the construction and operation of an 80-megawatt utility-scale solar facility on approximately 1,065 acres of private land in Buckingham County. The project is being developed by Hodson Energy and is legally referred to as Mountain Pine Arbonia LLC and Mountain Pine II Arbonia, excuse me, Mountain Pine Arbonia II LLC, the applicant, situated near the intersection of Blinky's Road and CG Woodson Road. The project involves these six separate land parcels, which were notated earlier in this presentation, and they're owned by two distinct property owners. Total area for the project is approximately 1,065 acres, which is currently used for timber production with some agriculture. The development footprint, including solar panels, fencing and access roads, will be contained in approximately 595 acres of the overall site. Access to the project will be available through entrances located along Route 672 and Route 670. Hodson Energy has researched prior solar applications to the county and utilized the guidance given by the Buckingham County Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors in their approach to solar developments. The conditions set forth in prior approvals have formed the basis of the project design parameters. It is our hope that this due diligence and care toward the direction set forth by the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors will result in a successful project for all parties involved. Once operational, the Arbonia Solar Project will provide approximately 156,000 megawatt-hours of clean energy to the local transmission grid, which is enough to power approximately 12,854 homes annually. Solar energy is clean, safe and ecologically beneficial. The project will emit no carbon pollution, release no heavy metals, acid gases or small particles, require no water to operate and displace traditional sources of electric generation. In fact, the Arbonia Solar Project will offset 61,713 tons of carbon annually, equivalent to the carbon sequestered by 73,034 acres of U.S. forest every year. Attached to this condition, to this application are 29 conditions. Would it be the pleasure of the planning commission to schedule a public hearing for this request, November 27th, 2023, 6:00 P.M.? While you are considering that request, the applicant is here with you this evening to go over this case and to answer and address questions, concerns, probably explain it much more better than this introduction in detail.
Ma'am Chairman, does the applicant have a map that he can show us?
Good evening. Signal to you for changes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would change now. I'm Frank Hopkins, I'm with Hodson Energy. We're utility-scale solar developer, operating in Virginia and a number of other states. We have about 3.5 gigawatts in our pipeline and on our team, we developed about 2.5 gigawatts. Go to the next slide. Again, my name is Frank Hopkins, I'm a VP of Development with Hodson Energy. A little bit of my background, I'm a former planning director, I'm a former zoning administrator, not too different from Nikki. And we also have Kyle West, our team, who's here. He's developed here in the state extensively, as well as across the country. He has over 10 years of experience and has developed dozens of projects. And you might run into Kim, she has a lot of public outreach for us, she's a community planner with our organization, but she is not here tonight. Here's an overview of the map. It's an 80-megawatt project that's enough to power about 10,000 homes. It's on 1,065 acres, 595 are under panel, has 75-foot buffers with 300 feet from residences, and it's a timber parcel, so there's a lot of existing vegetation that obscures the view of existing there. That percentage is about 56% of the overall site size, so there's a lot of extra land for buffering and pathways for wildlife. Next slide. As I mentioned, is a timber tract, there's pretty extensive trees there already. We did a viewshed analysis with Timmins, the main site that. The main site that needs to have some amount of fill-in is actually along C G Woodson, where there's currently corn planted. But the majority of the rest of the site is pretty well buffered and is not really that visible. We did reach out to neighboring landowners in multiple areas to see any interest they had, and we didn't hear much about buffering except off of Sleepy Hollow. You can go to the next slide. On Sleepy Hollow, there was a gentleman who came and spoke to us, and he asked for panels to be removed, and we did respond to that in kind. On environment and wildlife, Bear Creek runs through this, so it's kind of a natural wildlife corridor that can run through the entire property. It's a pretty extensive stream. We've done a wetland delineation to avoid all those areas. We've done an environmental resource analysis to make sure we're avoiding any critical areas as far as that's concerned. Go to the next slide. And then, of course, after this process, if we're successful, we'll go on to D E Q, at which point there'll be more extensive cultural and wildlife resource investigations, and those areas will be avoided if we go through that process as well. On erosion and sediment, again, we've done a full wetland delineation. We've been careful to avoid any sort of areas that are wetlands. We have a fifty-foot buffer off of wetlands. That can also increase if we go through the process with the E Q. But right now, we're at fifty, which is consistent with the prior cases. You can go to the next slide. Here, if you can see, our interconnection point, which is kind of in the northeast of this project. The substation is really the kind of new piece of infrastructure that needs to be built. There's an existing overhead two hundred and thirty K V line that runs up to the Brema Bluff Plant, Fluvanna. That substation is at least a third of a mile off of C G Woodson and about point six of a mile off of Blinky. So pretty well interior to that lot. I don't think anybody's going to see that. And again, the new infrastructure that has to be built is simply that, the overhead line's already there. This top project will take about twelve to eighteen months to build. We'll obviously post a decommissioning bond with the county, handle that. No new water onsite. It'll be monitored twenty-four seven. Go to the next slide. Done pretty extensive community outreach. We had a community meeting on October thirteenth. Some of you were there. I've met with Third Liberty Baptist Church at the Community Cares Day and spent time with them, hearing as many concerns as I could, which generally revolved around jobs. So we've partnered with Shine, which is a solar development like training program, and they've agreed to have a workshop approval of this so that people can come out and learn about jobs and get kind of in that training workforce. Because not only is our project going on, you guys know there's other projects that are going on here, as well as the rest of the state. So it's a great opportunity for people to get involved in that. From that landowner meeting, that's okay. Again, like I mentioned, we met with a gentleman a second time after intervening time to make sure we understood the concerns and responded to them. And we have baked that into our model. Those updates didn't make your packet because we're still iterative, working on this thing. But we have responded and we're working on those items and have a lot of them together for the next. The next slide. Did a financial analysis with Bangum. Toll came out to eight point five million dollars over the course of the project life. It's a pretty extensive multiplier, given that it's simply a timber property right now. The solar will bring in considerably more revenue to the project. Another thing I'd like to highlight, you know, I was going through the Riverstone application. They highlighted a company called R E one hundred that kind of gets companies to sign up for renewable goals. And I think at the time that that was passed by you guys, I think that company had something like three hundred and some odd companies signed up, and it's well over four hundred now. So I don't want to underestimate the economic development impact of signing these projects. It seems that more and more companies want to have them. In fact, locally in Richmond, I know Lego would not have located in Chesterfield had they not had a solar project attached to it. Key takeaway is it's a huge jump in revenue over the existing property. It's an existing timber tract, so it's going to get cut down anyways, and we'll leave the buffers as is and replant where needed. There's going to be, if this is approved, obviously, it'll go to state level agencies for additional review. So as far as environmental or community resources, it'll be evaluated for those as well. Any questions?
Any questions?
Does, yeah, does, I'm looking at Sleepy Hollow Road. Does that buck up against the bottom part of that property?
It does. It's kind of in the middle of the southern section. And if you go to the map, actually, it's way back up there.
Can't tell from the map. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it's kind of in the midsection and actually where that little kind of dog leg, it's a hollow red piece further down to the southwest. That was originally paneled, and we removed that. And then we've actually pulled the panels back from that entrance based on neighborhood feedback. And in fact, the gentleman who's, I believe, here tonight had a dog kennel there. He said, I'd like to have my dog kennel buffered like a house. We've accommodated that. Also closed, we studied every single possible entrance. This has four existing entrances. We studied them all. Sleepy Hollow is one that we studied. There are a majority of residences on that road, and we have removed that as an entrance. I've updated the conditions to reflect that and save it simply for emergency personnel. One of the concerns we heard was that there's some emergency fire or whatever, if they'd be able to get in. So for construction purposes, that will be closed, but for ongoing emergency purposes, that entrance would stay open.
So I'm sorry.
You mentioned a company that you had. Shine?
Shine, yeah.
S H I N E?
Yes.
And what kind of company is that?
So they're a workforce development company specifically related to solar. So they're a nonprofit that trains people to construct solar sites.
And does Shine stand for something or is that?
Is an acronym, I believe. Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Can you help me with that? Yes.
Solar Hands, something like that. But David Peterson, the executive director was.
David Peterson?
He was going to be here tonight, actually, to tell you more about it, but he ended up family emergency. But it's not just that their workforce program, what they do is they partner with community colleges all over the Commonwealth, and they're trying to get into high schools as well to provide solar installation training. The other thing is David was going to announce tonight, and it'll be the next hearing, that actually Shine is committing whether this project goes forward or not, that they're going to hold a job fair. So there have been enough projects approved in this county such that they feel like it's warranted to hold a job fair here prior to construction. I myself have overseen the construction of many solar projects, and a lot of construction companies will come, bring people from out of state. What we're trying to do here in Virginia is make sure we're tapping the workforce that's here and creating skill sets that can just not create temporary but permanent jobs.
All right. Have you or has he connected with Piedmont Community College?
They already have a program with Piedmont Community College.
They already have a, okay. Is this network to work?
I don't know. I don't know. That's why we wish he was here. He was supposed to be here, and it was a last minute thing, so sorry about that.
All right. Thank you. And then you said something about Ray one hundred, a much?
Oh, yeah, R E one hundred is a.
R A Y?
R E one hundred, I think, is the name of the company.
R E one hundred. What is that?
They sign people up, like sign companies up, like if you were a Microsoft or a Honda of the world, to commit to renewable goals by certain date. I found an Apex project in their. I looked at it months and months and months ago, and I stayed aware of it. It had like three hundred and so on. It had over four hundred. So I think there's, as someone who's worked in public government before, trying to do economic development activity, trying to track things, more and more big time companies are. And are looking for other projects to kind of co-locate with.
So have you been to the high school here also or not?
I've not been to the high school, no.
So you don't know if he's connected with the high?
We have discussed with Shine exactly that concept. What they're finding is they can do the actual skill set training at community colleges better, but what they do in high schools is usually kind of a, sort of a workshop to bring them up to speed on.
Got help in the back.
Oh, yeah, there we go. Oh, actually, yeah, actually, would you like a brochure on, I have a Shine brochure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Solar hands-on instructional network of excellence. That's why I couldn't remember.
Almost had it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Ma'am Chairman, I asked while we were at your presentation if there was a top graphical map. Have you made one yet?
I believe we do. Yeah. This is Lauren Wheeler. He's from our engineering firm, Timmins.
So when I was, when I was riding around the property, I noticed that there's a creek bed and then there's some wetland. It looks like the property rolls a bit. When I went up Sleepy Hollow, it looked like it was relatively flat. So have you, you know, what are your plans to handle the topography? Because it seems to me like there's quite a bit of roll in that land.
So the ideal is to not do much grading on the site. Rolling topography is fine, like steeper slopes are not ideal. We'll try to avoid those as much as possible and stick to the rolling slopes.
Do you have any idea with regard to the most significant grade you're going to work with, what percentage that is?
Try to stay under twenty percent slope.
Under what?
Under twenty percent slope.
Under twenty.
Other questions or discussion?
Yes, I have one. How much acreage will it take up for the solar panels alone?
Yeah, five ninety-five.
Is that, okay, that's what you stated. Heard of a thousand.
We'll say that was of the date of our submission. We've pulled back some panels, and so it's going to be less than that probably now.
Okay.
But I can update you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, that power line, does that power line go right through this property? There's a power line that goes across?
It's denoted in yellow on the screen.
Oh, okay.
Versus the northeast section that's existing, and we're going to build a substation off that, kind of interior to that northeast lot.
Now, I'll just add to that, Commissioner, at the community meeting, I think you asked me specifically, you know, why we had obtained that land to the north, and that's exactly why.
Because you had the power line?
Yeah, we couldn't, we would have no project if we couldn't access that line. So you'll see both the project substation and the access to the transmission line are on that property.
And then last, if you wouldn't mind explaining to, I mean, you did a nice job explaining your role in this whole thing, but I'd like to have you explain it to the commission. Fact that you're developers, you're going to contract, you're going to sell it to a contractor who ultimately sells it to an energy company.
Yeah, sure. So a lot of the development that goes on in the solar space, or just the commercial real estate in general, is about de-risking projects. So like, you know, we're going to do all these studies and make sure everything is squared away on that. Avoid wetlands, avoid cultural resources, avoid environmental resources. Make sure that this project can connect to the grid, can handle the energy going to the grid, can get the land use permit from a local community board, and get that all together. And then usually it is sold to another company. I think you'd voiced a lot of concerns about who that end user might be. I think that's just kind of the nature of the United States in general, though. I know Duke Power, for example, who's kind of like the Dominion of North Carolina, recently sold a lot of their portfolio to Brookfield, which is again another private company that's, you know, it's just kind of the nature of the beast that they could be sold to anyone. But yeah, so a lot of the projects are de-risked in that way and then sold to.
So you'll design it, get the paperwork, get the permissions, and then you're going to sell it to a contractor? And that contractor will build it?
No, so you sell it to another entity, and then they will hire a contractor to construct it.
So you're going to sell this, so really there's three veils in between. There's you, the secondary that will contract the contractor, and then that person's going to turn around and sell it to an energy company.
So I'll just, being the old solar guy in the room, oh, and done a lot of these. The answer is there's really two entities, and that, so the developer and then the end owner operator. The end owner operator typically is the one, and it does vary, but this is the typical model. They will issue a request for proposals to a construction company to get the best bid, right? And then they will select the construction company. In our industry, we just call it E P C, an engineering procurement and construction company. So be it R W E or be it Dominion or Appalachian Power, whomever, they would still go through the exact same process. Also, I would note, because we discussed this as well, you know, let's bring it to Buckingham. R W E recently has presented a project. And, you know, one of the things I think you noted, Commissioner, was that, you know, you liked it because they were going to be the end owner operator.
Right.
But what I would also note is when R W E started developing that project, the name of their company was Con Edison. So they were then purchased by a German entity called R W E. And there's no one to say that it might not be a different company in five years or a different company from five years from now. So really what dictates how these things are developed and constructed is the conditions and the contractual agreements that are put in place. And so that's why we really appreciate the questions and also the thoroughness of the twenty-nine plus conditions. Because at the end of the day, if we're going to be totally honest, nobody knows who's standing behind the project, be it, no matter how big the company is.
So you will develop it and ultimately either contract, you'll eventually contract with an energy supplier who then contracts with a builder?
That's right. So in Virginia, due to the Virginia Clean Economy Act, which was passed in twenty twenty by the General Assembly, you know, it's mandating both Dominion Energy and Appalachian Power to hit certain renewable energy goals. And what you're seeing a lot of is particularly Dominion buying these kind of projects, and then they are running the request for proposals by the construction company and managing that whole process.
So you will not have anything to do with the construction company?
No, we sell it what's called notice to proceed to construction. So we get everything ready so that once we hand it off, they can just, you know, run that process.
Thank you.
Here's.
I'm just thinking, looking. Let's see where you're going to hook to the two hundred and thirty thousand vote line. And then when I worked at De Brimo, it used to be the one going east and west or one other side of Fluvanna. I didn't know that they had changed that over here to the one going through Buckingham. I thought that was still the one fifteen.
Two thirty. I can double check, though.
Yeah.
You worked there, though.
Yeah, I worked there for thirty years, yeah.
I'll double check for you.
Yeah. I didn't know they moved it, or this was sad. I maybe they done it when they changed all the substation.
They did redo that substation up there.
I just thought I'd tell you, ask you.
Happy to report, I'll get back to you.
That's a big deal, the two hundred and thirty thousand.
I'll hop in on that one, too. Typically, an eighty megawatt project can interconnect to either a one fifteen or a two thirty. Typically, in our industry, you need to be over forty megawatts to be at a transmission level, and that usually will go into a sixty-nine K V or a one fifteen K V, somewhere between like forty and sixty megawatts. But once you get over sixty, you've got a lot of variation on what you can do. You can go pretty high on a two thirty. I mean, eighty definitely makes sense from a financial, it's all built into the financial model and what the upgrades will be required to step up the voltage to it.
Just thinking, I'm glad you all are fine.
One last question. The fellow that was there that was raising the concerns, fellow named Douglas Oliver, did you have an opportunity to talk with him any further?
He's here tonight.
Yeah.
I personally went down and met with him at his home, and I don't know, Doug, do you want to say anything? But that's why we made the changes to the site plan, so that's why we pulled back. We had shown Sleepy Hollow Road being a secondary entrance. It's no longer the case. It will only be used for emergencies, as Frank stated, which I think is in everybody's interest. It will only be used for emergencies, as Frank stated, which I think is in everybody's interest. And, but, secondly, we had pulled panels far back from his kennel and the other related homes in that area, and-
So there was a home that was right up next to the left-hand side of that, there was a home that was pretty close to that fence line, as I recall. I think that was one of your relatives, wasn't it? Right. I imagine you moved your panels back to accommodate those people?
Yes, and you can see from there, they actually have a higher setback than really any other house.
Further questions or discussion?
I'd ask one more about BTG, are you leasing from them, or are you going to buy from them?
Buy from them, so they will not be the owner.
So they're going to be, they're not going to be, they're going to be out of the picture until?
Correct.
And you're leasing the rest of the land?
Correct.
Okay.
There are no further questions or discussion, is there a pleasure of the commission?
Move to make it to a public-
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, one question. Where is that, is the fence just going to be around the panels, like inside of the water, or is the water going to be inside of the fence?
Yeah, no, the, we can't, it'll be outside of the waterways, the delineated wetlands is up, yeah. And the other thing, that just also allows for the wildlife corridor, they wouldn't be able to get through the project otherwise.
Thank you.
The next item of new business, I'll turn back over to Johnny to resume the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ashley, for taking both of those applications. That'll bring us to Buckingham, excuse me, Buckingham County introduction case.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the last case before us this evening for introduction is case 23ZMA335. Landowner and applicant is Buckingham County. The particular parcel in regards to this case this evening is tax map 138, parcel 15. It's approximately 8.78 acres, and it's located at or near 284 Industrial Park Road, Dillwyn. It's currently zoned neighborhood commercial, and the applicant, I am a zoning administrator, the authorized agent on behalf of the county this evening, the request is to rezone this parcel from neighborhood commercial to recreational access for conformity with county usage. As I mentioned, the property is located at or near 284 Industrial Park Road. This request is made due to necessary compliance to the zoning ordinance regarding the usage of the property. This lot has been used by the Buckingham County Recreation Department for a number of years as a playground park area for the soccer program, and this use is not allowed by right in the neighborhood commercial NC1 zoning district. It was recently determined that county-owned property in usage should be in accordance with the standards of the Buckingham County zoning ordinance. Would it be the pleasure of the planning commission to schedule a public hearing for this request, November 27th, 2023, at 6:00 PM?
Thank you, Nikki. Any questions on this application from the commission?
Can I make a motion, did we go ahead, have a public hearing on?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Can I do it, Mr.?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
I'm looking at your narrative, and you're saying you really are doing this zoning ordinance regarding the usage of the property. You said that landowner, Buckingham County, has to do necessary compliance with zoning ordinance regarding, why can't we do an SUP in NC1?
There was a comment and a discussion regarding whether it be SUP or rezone this specifically to recreational access. This property is being utilized very similar to Gene Dixon Memorial Park. It was the request of the Board of Supervisors for this to be a zoning map amendment and not an SUP. Property is not to be utilized according to the direction I was given for anything other than recreational access, is owned by the county for recreation.
Is this any part of that 10 acres, or whatever the number of acres, we committed to the school?
No, sir, the soccer fields have always been separate.
So then, it's my understanding from the Economic Development Committee that the entire parcel, 123 acres, minus, is that minus, I think, I don't know if that 123 is excluded?
The 125, it does not include the soccer field. The 125 would be what the 10 acres that's been up for discussion with the Christian school.
So that 125 does not include the soccer field?
No, this is an 8.78 parcel that has its own tax map. It has been separate from the industrial park for a number of years.
Okay, any further discussion?
All is is changing to the same zone, and like she said, at the Gene Dixon Park, so we can use it for the same thing, and not be a bad discussion on what we're not doing.
Further discussion, because we have a motion and a second.
Okay.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That's the passage announced. All right, Nikki, that brings us to your building permits and report.
Building permits are included for your review, as they are monthly, and I don't have anything further to report, but maybe just to address the rezoning of the 8.7 acres. There was a recent case that came up that required a text amendment, a special use permit, and as a result, it was determined the supervisors felt that if any landowner needed to come forward, the county would not have the express right to use county-owned property as they wished, if it did not have the correct zoning. So that's truthfully why this case came forward, and parks and playgrounds are not allowed by right in an NC1.
All right, thank you, Nikki.
Yes, sir.
That brings us to Commissioner Madoff, so, and any commissioners have anything they want to voice? Being done, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
That was unanimous, believe it or not. Thank you. Special thanks to-